Is the city council workshop for the city of Bonny Lake? Date is July 5th, 2022. Let's, before we start, let's stand and salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Pat Clark, you may roll call, please. I'm here. At least 80% of us.
Debbie Merrick-Hart.
Here.
Councilmember Baldwin.
Here.
Councilmember Evans.
Here.
Councilmember Bullockton.
Here.
Councilmember McLeven. Councilmember Lawson.
Present.
And Councilmember Lawson.
Here. May I like to make a motion to excuse Councilman.
If I, okay. I have, we tried to vote on that last week. It was something that's not really supposed to be voted on. So I, he's excused as far as I'm concerned.
Oh, very good.
And let's see now, let's start with council open discussion. Anybody wish to start with the raise their hands? Or anybody have any particular issues they wish to talk about? Oh, Councilmember Lawson. And can I ask, this is something that did come up last week in that when we are sitting up on the dais, we have our monitors in front of us. And when we, when we just do this and everything, first of all, I can barely see it, but our people who are keeping the minutes scanning are, it's hard for them to see too. So if, you know, if we could do like we did in school.
That's my dream, man.
So anyway, that being said, Councilmember Lawson, what's the thought?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to know how things went last night. At least probably fireworks didn't go well.
Yeah, I was just telling, telling you that. Just telling John that it was pretty much the same as the other July wars that we've had. There were some complaints, voting complaints. There were some, several firework complaints and several on the lake, people shooting fireworks into the lake, which obviously. We're upset about that. Other than that, any major.
No, be serious. How about boat launch, any boat launches?
There was, yeah, the, the boat was, the entire park was chaotic. Park was horrible.
Okay. But no, no shootings or killings.
No major, yeah, no major.
Well, I just hope you're not playing out of that.
Okay, also on June 16th, I attended the Chamber of Cluckit luncheon. Did you view a partner? They're looking for a director. Someone who will take the job on Chamber Collective. Unless they attended the meeting, she spoke at it also, so a good steer there. They did ask where the mayor was at, if he could show up once in a while. So it might be pretty tough for you to show up there at luncheon, so.
Would that be the Chamber Commerce speaking?
Yeah.
Okay.
The Chamber Collective.
Oh, Chamber of Collective.
Chamber Collective.
Okay.
Because our chamber covers Thunder, Lakeland Hills and Bonny Lake.
I see.
It's a group and that thing.
That's the same meeting that we had where Mr. Johnson put on his, his one presentation a couple of months ago. Okay.
And also remind everyone in council, especially tomorrow night, all the things on Allen York Park happening, our concerts down there. We got the Lions Club Beer Garden, that Lions, that's what the Lions Club. Please just say hi.
Yes.
So events also, the Kids Club is coming up on November 11th. A lot of things happening on North Park, so be great to see city officials there and council members coming.
And the, and the Lions Club.
Beer Garden.
The Beer Garden, those, those funds go to the.
Community, buy his glasses.
Okay.
We help the, helps my kiss house, whoever people that need things are from the plateau. My money raised in the fight helps stays in the plateau.
Okay.
That's what that goes to.
Well, I will try to contribute as much as I can.
There you go. Let's see, I don't know. That's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, but Councilmember Watson, Councilmember Bullockton.
What time does the, is that, is that the Taste of Taps tomorrow? Or is that Tunes of Taps?
Tunes of Taps.
Okay, and what time does that start?
Seven.
International nine?
Yes, eight. Eight, eight thirty.
It starts at six thirty.
Six thirty?
Yeah, that's what the website shows. Okay. All right, any further open discussion? Seeing none, now we have to review council minutes, Councilmember Watson.
We're good.
Okay, very good. And now I believe that we do have a discussion item on the public scopes disclosure policy. I'll hand the floor over to Councilmember Evans.
Hello, thank you. Get this. So I, I know, I know there's going to be an ask and I know, you know, we are short staff, but we're also underfunded right now. And I'm trying to come up with creative ways that may help both situations. So a while ago, I had asked and found out through the MSRC, there are a few cities that do have a limited public disclosure policy cap on the timeframe that city clerks and city staff are allocated in order to do that. Some have a eight hours per week or a 20%, which is eight hours per week. And what that does for those cities is it allows them to acknowledge the public disclosure request. By law, we still have to fulfill it. And I'm, I'm not talking about not fulfilling it. I'm just simply trying to suggest some sort of option here that would allow, that would take some of the burden off of the administration staff having to do all these in such a rapid timeframe. So Sadie did a great job putting together, I've got community screens open here. She put together a great job, it's in our packet of what other cities have. Every block of resolutions in here, Good Harbor, I believe, some Mamish. There was a couple.
Port Orchard, Snoppon.
Okay, Port Orchard, Snoppon, Slim. And so that's what's taking up most of the pack here is just those cities regulations. But the great thing that Sadie put together, let me try and find it here, is on, I believe, page 85 of the packet. It is the chart of all the cities, their population, how our city staff looks compared to others. And where, where we're ahead on some things, where we're behind on some other things. And if you guys had a chance up there, if you've got a chance to look at that. And then earlier in the year, Sadie had sent out a email as well, explanation page, staff versus ordinance. It was an attachment on email. That's also 224 pages, a lot of it is the same stuff that's in our packet. But the, the first page, explanation of pages and the staff versus ordinance discusses, let me see, it's not the first page. It's the, the third page, reasons for needing help versus an ordinance, paying overtime. Hopefully everyone had a chance to look at that and ask any questions they had. And then on page, that's staffing options, page seven of that document. She has option one of hiring a full-time, non-represented, overtime eligible public disclosure specialist. Pay rates all listed on there. Option two, hiring a full-time representative admin, one, two. Add or promote a, one administrative specialist, two. There's a lot of great detailing options here. She did a lot of work putting this all together so that we have, we have options here. And then there was a question asked of Kathleen, of which an email came through. And Kathleen was opposed to making this change. But the, the one thing that she did, put in here was, you know, it's councils, council is here for the financial side of things. This is the mayor, the mayor city council. The city has authority over budget, which, or the council has authority over budget, which includes authority over staffing levels. The council doesn't typically get involved in the day-to-day of how staff spend their time. However, I think that because we're, my attempt here is to limit the, the financial impact of new staff. It's kind of that, that gray out area. I'm not trying to say how staff spend their time. I'm just trying to figure out how we can get the most out of the budget that we currently have. So I had a couple of questions on that. I know there's, we don't have a software. Is there software that is available that would help ease some of this burden?
There's NextRequest, there's Google Q and A. Those are the two that most cities use. Goes back to problems, depends on what you're looking for. Currently we're doing by Excel spreadsheet and I'm doing it step by step on everything.
And, and that's obviously not efficient. In, in my work, we have a retention policy. I work in aerospace manufacturing. We have to have, we have to retain records for a certain amount of time. I know your, your message here said we go back to 1949. Is that, is there a requirement or a retention minimum that we have?
The issue is, we have a lot of paper records sitting, it could be in desk, it could be a box somewhere in a corner, out in the inactive. And they are past retention, but nobody has really anything. And so we're trying to clean them up because we know we don't need them. But that takes time because you have to look at everything and if not, there isn't something to need. And the network has thousands, thousands of records and the same thing with that. None of that's been organized and named properly or retention is checked. So staff is trying to do it, but being understaffed, we're not able to get very far.
What, what is the retention policy?
It depends on what records.
Oh, okay. So it's, it's, it is variable. What is the, what are some examples of like, like an email versus a, a building certificate?
So if it's an email from a higher debt, ex debts, talking about city business, that is retained for 10 years. If it's just regular staff to staff, that's only two years. If it's certificates, anything that has to do with buildings, houses, construction, that's maybe 10 years after the disposition of building or after it's turned down. You'll have to save the records for 10 years. But some you save, some you don't. So you have to sort through every single piece of paper.
Okay. And it's 10 years after it's gone down?
Correct.
Not 10 years after it's built. So anyone could come in and ask for their drawings for their house and get it?
We are required to keep the site plan for the term of the, for the 10 years to half life.
Okay.
But not the plans, just the site plan. That's what we need to see.
Okay, not the drawings themselves?
No, those, those are only 90 days after conception.
Okay. And what is in the, yeah, in the public works area, all the. And then can we use interns on something like this? On, mostly specifically to the, the digitizing of, of old records?
The problem with that is they don't have access to the network or Adobe and digitizing Adobe is like a must. Can't digitize without it because you have separate records, you have to name it, you have to.
Yeah, I mean, it's $20 a month for Adobe, I mean, putting that, I think.
This, it depends what you guys would want. They would have to have a computer. They'd have to, I'd have to train them on what to do, where the records belong, which department had to name them, which records we have to keep, which ones we don't, what the detention is on every single record.
Yeah, it's a lot of work, but it, in the end, you know, it gets some of the job done for lesser cost. And then the fees that were collected, in 2021, we collected $1,163. And your, your notes are saying we basically need $200,000 worth of people to collect 1,600, $1,100. Is it even worth having a fee? I mean, that just seems like one more unnecessary burden. I think we could do without the $1,100 if we have to get more people involved with finance and payments and, and all of that. Or is it worth increasing the fee to help offset some of that? I don't know that that's really the, the right answer, but.
You have to follow the fees that are R C W or you have to break it down by staff time, the overhead, and that takes a lot of time. The route, you have to track how long you're literally, you know, down to the minute, how long depending on record in order to do that. So that takes a lot more time. So most people just adopt the R C W fees and next we have adopted. The fees are more for those larger records. And it's also hopefully, you know, you have someone who says you want any and all records since 1949 and you tell them what to give, obviously hopefully that helps them, they'll want to help narrow it down.
What is it, 10 cents a page?
Depends on what it is. You've got 10 cents a page for scanning. Then you also have 10 cents for every four attachments. You get to pay, charge for gigabyte. And you get to charge for scanning and making it official copy.
So some of the cities had, like I mentioned, put in the, the cap on that. On that, that page 85, I believe.
Yeah.
Page 85, you can see that we have in most scenarios, less staff than those cities that actually put that in place. So I mean, to me, that makes it reasonable sense that if a city has more staff and they think this was the, the right choice for them, having less staff, that would seem like it, it may behoove us to consider that as well. I'm not taking anything away from the fact that we need staff. There's, there's no doubt about that. I just, I just don't, I'm trying to think a little outside of the box here on if the staff is not allocated, what are some options that we can do to help relieve some of that burden in the clerk's department? But that's, that's why I wanted to bring this up and see if anyone had any discussion on the matter. Thoughts of.
Councilmember Baldwin.
Yes, thank you so much for just trying to find a way to, I, I know the budget is a source of just constant frustration. But in the options for staffing that Sadie did put together, is there, you feel, just in your research, that you feel is, you know, better over another? Or are you against all three of the options?
I, I, it's just comes down to money. I mean, every single one of those options was $100,000 in perpetuity with three and a half percent raises every year, after year, after year, plus, you know, bumps to the next level. And at some point, I don't, I don't know that this budget cycle, we're going to have more money than we had this last budget cycle. And then two years from that, I'd rather not lay off people. I'd rather come up with alternates to easing some of that pain. I mean, that, if money wasn't the issue, I mean, if everyone would they, what they need, you know? Not what they want, because I don't think anyone's asking for more than they, they need, more than they need. But, you know, I don't know that in a scenario this is going to pass, yeah.
So we just wanted to kind of bring up the five ordinances slash resolutions that we're comparing to. The population is way under our population. We have so many records and they're not organized, they're not named properly. So sometimes a record is called the greenhouse next to the purple one. And I have to figure out that that's responsive record. So I'm being like a P I, having to find them. When you receive that record, as soon as you receive it, all responsive records that has to do with that request cannot be disposed of. So the longer you hold it and push it out, I have to try and make sure staff is not disposing of records. And without knowing what they are or looking at them, I won't know that.
Which brings up my question, population. I'm wondering why. They say these like Mercer Island, Moses Lake, Tom Water, Oak Harbor, the ones that are comparable to our population as opposed to the ones that are the.
They don't write this ordinance.
And due to comparison in that other packet with other cities that are comparable as far as which one type programs and how many people.
It seems like there's a training issue there that if the files aren't being retained in the order they need to be, that's causing so much more work for you. If, when that file is created, if it were just stored and named appropriately, that would probably eliminate a good chunk of your P I work.
Yes, and staff is working on that. But unfortunately, a lot of the records are from staff that are no longer here and they're from way back when. I mean, I have records up in the vault that so old, nobody would, they're written on like little onion paper.
And I would imagine Chuck has the way through domain servers and everything to set rewrite access so things couldn't be deleted at some point based on folder permissions and everything, user, user settings.
We could if they, if, if folders were not being used indiscriminately. I mean, I, I don't want to tell you how many doc one documents we have on our network right now because they don't save it other than what the generic name is. And that goes back decades.
And maybe go through a training class. So that's something I have implemented and all new staff go through it. So staff are trying to clean up the mess, but it's probably a big, big job.
Oh, Councilmember Baldwin, sorry.
You had it up here.
Yeah, I know, you, you had your game very high.
Yeah, I think a couple of considerations in regards to, and again, I, I know that you're just trying to find a different. But I think when we're trying to limit the amount of hours, and I assume any other cities, it is working. But again, we are a larger city and, you know, when, when those record requests come in, we're just at such a high liability. You know, that if the, if the first line of defense can't function properly in making sure that the city does not face some sort of litigation, that's, that's highly concerning to me. And I think if we limit the hours, you limit the amount of time that people are able to solve the problem. And so I think in one of the ways to maybe solve the problem in talking with Sadie, I think it's that the city consider, you know, some sort of programming like the Gov Q and A and things like that, because the way that she has to sift through records is, is a little ridiculous. It is, she needs something much more effective for programming and things like that. Just so that in the long term, things can be found easier and the process can be more streamlined. Yeah.
If I might, I just want to remind everybody, you know, we are not making any budgetary decisions. As we all know, there will be any number of requests for staffing that will be coming forward as part of this process, you know, working through that as we move through the budget cycles. So we're not making decisions.
Yeah. And I just want to bring this up, so we, we have some sort of alternate. It's not the best, it's not, but you know, if you look at, on that page 85 document, Snoppon. There, they have different resolutions or different categories to their, to their request. Category one is five to 30 days. Category two is four to five weeks to several months. Category three is five to six weeks to several months. So depending on the, the nature of the request, you know, it, it has to be acknowledged. There's no doubt it has to be acknowledged, but the nature of the request, we could say, based on this, the number of hours associated with this, this might be a category three where we're, we're estimating times at five to six weeks for, for this. And, and the limitation of the hours isn't a drop everything. It's still at the discretion of the clerk and the administration to exceed that. But it does at least in certain weeks allow for some catch-up on some other items.
Oh, yeah, I did see that in policies where they had a catch-all razor.
Yeah.
Uh, Councilmember Bullockton, do you have your hand up?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, do with the, kind of the way the records are, do we actually have category one, two, and three at this point, you know? I, and haven't we thought about possibly even maybe a two-year type of a situation, hiring somebody for two years to kind of get the records straight and then do another assessment after that to figure out if we need to keep that person on or?
The recommendation that I was trying to do was an admin for two years so that the other two that are currently in the office could move up to the proper title with the work that they're doing. And then the records would be getting cleaned up and there'll be help to meet the public disclosures. And the admin would be the one that would be taking care of day, 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 council packet, the mail, the answering of the counter, the phones, things like that.
And that was option three on her list here, which was the $120,000 with the additional person and the two promotions that are listed in option three.
Dustin.
Yeah.
I recall that we did this project a couple of years ago. Three years ago, we had an intern doing scanning for us in the summer. I believe we had some making it there for a long time without your records or H R records. But I know we had people on staff downstairs. Now, three years ago, maybe four years. Imagine four, we probably.
Four records submitted on the, on the up and down.
We, we had someone temporary come in and do scanning. And I had, I've had some help when I can get it, but there's certain things that, so they're pretty much taking all the records in a box, scanning them all. They don't know what, which record that they have to keep. They're just scanning it and trying to somehow separate the names so that they're first going to know and be able to know what we're looking at by the name of the title. But they can't do any of the actual, you know, retention and know if we.
Thank you, Trey, there. Thank you.
Start, start scanning down with like an O C R, what are you going to do?
It is now.
Okay.
Well, let's get to the other bit more. Where, when we scan, where, what are we scanning it to? I'm assuming we do not have the properties with the Q and A and the extra parts.
So we do not have a records management program currently. So it gets scanned to either the network or fox.com depending on the department, depending on the register. Only certain, only certain staff have access to fox.com because it is going to be paid per person, per month. So not all departments can afford that, so certain records can go out there. And majority of the records are pretty much on the network.
Is fox.com just kind of like, or is it just some sort of cloud-based storage system?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. I'm underwood, I can't, I wasn't sure what it was. It's, it's not a record retention or anything like that. This is just strictly.
Just cloud storage.
Okay.
Councilmember, is, is there actually a proposal or?
No, it's just a, just a discussion on if this was something even more pursuing.
Sure, I didn't know if you tended to lean towards, you know, one particular, because you mentioned some insubordinates. They're a fairly large city.
Yeah, they're 13,000, 14,000, I think is what the.
Actually, you know, most of them are.
Oh, you're correct.
It's just, it's not common.
Snoppon.
Seattle, you know, what, the S city, what's the. Councilmember Baldwin. Councilmember Ballman.
Um, I guess my question, I, I have just one question. The other part is, I was talking with the clerks over at the A W C conference. I was just talking to them about this, this issue and needing to make sure, you know, just asking them questions. And they did, excuse me, Sadie did mention this to me as well, I'm sorry for this, but just in making sure that, that she's not the only person with the skills that do do all the things. And I don't know whose responsibility is that, I don't think it should be Sadie's to then, I don't know, train, cross-train everybody to be able to know that more than just two to three people can do certain skills, that they can do a lot, a lot more, and I know that that's something that does happen sometimes, but. Yeah, and then the other thing that I had a question with option three, I'm looking at this as the administrative specialist one slash two, and that was the one using the ARCA funds. And I'm looking at the salary as eighty thousand, between eighty thousand and ninety-seven thousand annually. I guess my question is, if that person is, is that a set salary? To me, that seems.
The administrative position.
Okay.
On our pay scale.
Well, because clerks aren't, when I think of the clerk's office and I think of clerks, I don't think of them as, they're not secretaries, you know, they, they do many things. And so, but the person that they are going to be hiring in this potential option is going to be, seems like they, they're going to have more limited scope. You know, they're going to do things.
They're working on all the council stuff.
Okay.
So that is doing more than just like secretary work and the scale is based off the act me because they will be represented, which is a big part of the problem because in order for me to have help, in case I'm a burden, I need the staff that are going to help me with records and public disclosure, not representatives, because I need documents and personnel.
Yes, okay.
And, and those amounts are salary plus benefits, so they're, they, they look at those higher than the actual salary.
Okay.
Okay. Good, we're in a discussion. Okay, let's move on. We'll now go to item D, it's discussion of our on a limb use of code, chapter two, Matt Carter.
Okay, just brought this forward because chapter two has not had a fully due since twenty fifteen. And a lot of our policies do not match up with our code any longer or the code doesn't match up with policy depending on how you look at it. So went through it and I made some suggestions. The mayor has looked through it, John and Debbie Mayor Carter, and just wanted to go through it and see if you guys had any questions, anything else you'd like to add or remove. There are a couple of things in here that we're asking if you, which you guys would like us to do about.
How about we delineate some sort of public disclosure policy? Cast that.
Okay.
So one of the questions is on page ninety, and it is code two point zero four point zero five zero. Just had a question on, is there a reason why we are using Sturgis and not Roberts?
That, that's a good question, I, I would have been agreeing that. Now, our parliamentarians that I've spoken to said there's not much difference. I think Sturgis is a little bit more matter-of-fact and straightforward.
Google would disagree, of course.
Yeah, of course.
You do the verses, right? And so it's generally accepted that the, my information that Sturgis is a much more condensed and straightforward than the actual Roberts rules of order.
And point of order, that's exactly what I meant, I'm sorry, I meant if you had a lot of. Yeah, instead of Roberts, I meant that Sturgis.
Because Roberts is one of those very large. You like to keep it relatively simple and you can actually read it in the public, you're pretty much a understanding that Sturgis is one of the people that you're leaning towards that. For sure. I don't know whether it's still, whether fourth edition is the one, is the current one, or whether it's.
It is the current one, it's just finding training, even following Roberts rule, um, Sturgis.
No, that is true, it's them and he's, but it's pretty much a dinosaur program, which if you take it in program, you know, the lady does these little dinosaur examples that. They go along with it. One thing I did wonder, I, I, I don't know if we have a comment on it or not, but one thing I did want to put on record at least tonight was just a reminder to everybody in here that in following the parliamentary procedure, that, and I know it's terribly, terribly hard to, to kind of distinguish between the two, but when we are talking on the record, and I know I make a lot of pithy comments whether, whether it should or not, but I try very, very hard not to make any sort of personal opinions speak. And it is kind of against our parliamentary rules to be talking about personal opinions opposed to procedure and ordinances, what we should be talking about here in the council. So I just wanted to emphasize that as far as us going by our Sturgis rules. That, that is part of both rules, both Roberts and Sturgis, that as a council, it is inappropriate to, to put our personal opinion. So, oh, yes, so Councilmember Evans.
Personally, I disagree with, no kidding. With, besides, besides just this one paragraph, is there any? Higher teaching. Sturgis to Roberts, taking over all, everything.
So that would be a, just a simple section of code. Really won't change the ring, because the Roberts, you still shorten it. And I can have an example from another city.
But, you know, if you're actually considering using Roberts instead of Sturgis, you're talking about redoing the whole. I disagree.
That's why I was asking that, I wanted that information.
I'm not looking for Roberts rules of order. Sturgis is not. You, you, there's all kinds of stuff in Roberts rules of order that are not even applicable to our seven councils.
Well, Rob, Roberts started in the eighteenth century and kind of went on. Sturgis was actually money in.
Yeah, I think that's.
There, there are year one. Roberts out now, but there's all kinds of stuff in Roberts rules of order.
Yeah, you have, when you're writing a company, you just, you have to separate those two, those things.
Oh, uh, Councilmember Ballman, I'm sorry, I.
Oh, you're first, okay. So I'm just thinking though that under the Roberts rules, I mean, that's literally every, every training that I've had has been under Roberts rules, not under Sturgis. So I just think it would be easier to stick to what we're learning because then I'm having to learn something else. And I know originally when Roberts rules came out, it was like a ten-page document. So if you go back to original intent and just go with what we need specifically, which would be the original content of Roberts rules. I don't even know honestly how Sturgis is run. You know, I, because I've been trained on Roberts. So I, it would be much easier if we just stick to what we're trained to. And then like Sadie said, I believe that we can take what pertains to council and use it in our meetings versus, you know, all of the other stuff. You know, there's a thousand pages, but we don't need all of that because we're not, you know, and, and we don't have to know that. We just need to know the basics and how, how the meeting is supposed to be run, which would probably be the first couple chapters, which is essentially what we're learning. Would I be correct in that assessment? I believe so.
But there's, you, you're saying that you're going to reference a book, but you're not going to follow it.
No, you're gonna, you're gonna follow, but like the whole entire book does not pertain to like every.
If you say you're going to use it, then now you're following. You know, you're going to have people that's going to look in there. Oh, and or you're going to have a council member try to use it and they're going to be looking like, doesn't even apply, and you're going to be saying, well, it's in our council policies.
So rest of it's not straight enough, Sturgis.
Well, you should be, that's what they always, A W C, it's only courses.
And that was Roberts rules.
And they're done, so. Now, now I do have to say, and, and sorry, when I did the very first training that I did, I asked our mediator about that, the fact that, you know, what's it follow Sturgis? Do, the comment that she gave me was that there really was not that much difference in the practice and, and how we, and how we go forth between Sturgis and Roberts. So in her teaching Roberts in a practical sense, it's the, if we follow Sturgis, there's not much more difference. Now, that being said, I do have a copy of the Sturgis rules of mine. If, I don't know how many copies we do have, that they can be for that. As far as how to proceed, that, that's the only one that I found. And, and I quite frankly, I'm better on record, I did Pilgrim from the clerk's office. So if you've been looking for it, Sadie, yes.
I do have one.
I think I have, like, literally, I think I have a Sturgis for dummies book.
Oh, please, I would love that.
Because you're going to have a situation in Roberts, you can have all of. Because you can look at Sturgis, every single item that's in that little book, and you can say that we follow it basically.
Yeah, you can't pick and choose, we can't say we've all the constitution except for these. I mean, if, if, if we, if we adopt it, we adopt from front cover to back cover.
Unless there's some strange version of Roberts rules of order, some kind of like smaller version, you, you will find all kinds of weird stuff in there.
So I was just asking the question only because obviously the training that I give for new council members and staff are Roberts rules, not Sturgis. But I was just asking personally, Sam.
Because, because again, you, you could beat Sturgis to ours. Good luck with, with Roberts. You literally have to be trained on it.
Well, as, as the teacher quoted, she was like, yeah, Roberts rules is kind of gone off the deep end as far as they're just trying to control every single aspect of every single meeting. But really, the first half of the book is, is the only thing that most people are actually going to use because that's what pertains to ninety-nine point nine percent of the meetings unless you're like an expert in everything.
Right, now that, and yeah, we're taking a common sense approach to that, usually the case of just everything, but Councilmember Evans did that same point, that we certainly cannot cherry pick. It kind of like, in, in, you know, my profession, the rules of evidence, you can't just say, well, this, this. But, you, you know, the reason why I'm using that though is that you go through a standard court procedure, you're really only using maybe three of the rules. But, you know, when you adopt it, you're adopting the whole rules that, that you have to follow.
I'm not saying like if somebody comes up with rule number ten thousand ninety-nine that I'm going to say, oh, we don't go by that one.
Uh, Councilmember Ballman, do you have?
Yeah, I agree with Councilmember Fullerton that we should adopt the Roberts rules since that is what we're known training on. Really makes sense else that we're not being trained on. The other thing I wanted to say also is that if there is an instance where someone were to point something out that were in, you know, the Roberts rules number or whatever it may be, and the council didn't feel like that was, you know, a, a good thing to use in our meetings, we could always as a council remove that part. So I, I guess we're, we're trying to put this into a box a little bit too much. I think, yeah, we are being trained on Roberts rules, why would we not do that? Why would we not adopt that in the verbiage? And then if something were to come up where, again, we said, we don't know that we agree with that as a council and we could always, so.
For either.
But you're mentioning if somebody were to bring something up, correct?
Then, then what are you going to do in the middle of the meeting? If you're fourteen, chapter twelve, sub verse thirteen, and in accordance with that, you need to.
Then wouldn't we lose promotion?
Then you're going to have the full council say, okay, well, we're just, of any policies that.
Oh, I don't know if we could, that would do that. Yeah, I don't know that we would do something that extreme, but.
But, but in that, that instance, your city attorneys are parliamentarian. So you turn to the city attorney to name them.
Go on and on and on and on and on, that's why everybody adopts a subset of that as per Sturgis. That's why Sturgis was written, it was written for small assemblies.
Oh, Deputy Mayor Carter. I was just going to say, I think it's probably important to have a good understanding. Oh, my God, teachers assigning us both books. We did go to training on Roberts rules and Sturgis. I was asking later, was Sturgis, I don't know, you ask the. Training. I don't know.
That's a very good question.
Same thing, this is. And, and I mean, it's a distilled version for smaller assemblies.
I haven't been able to find training, all the trainings I've found have been on Roberts rule.
But, no, no, but, but Councilmember Swatman is, is correct. When it comes down to what Sturgis is in essence, that's still a version of Roberts and it is, and it has been adopted for smaller assemblies like, like the city. I, I don't know the history behind when the council adopted it or not, which I believe was Matt Carter's question when it, when it comes to this, but Sturgis seems to be more appropriate.
But it's just something that somebody can read and understand for the basis. If you want to make things ultra complicated, you could adopt Sturgis.
Right.
You mean Roberts.
I don't see a point of changing. Exactly, and I, and I can say that as, as the chair of running these meetings, I think everybody has got my preference to run them, even though we do, we do things informally and it's a bit of a, of a hybrid when it comes to things, but having an orderly process makes a much cleaner, much better record and it certainly helps our meditator and our clerks as far as when they have to record. And so, you know, people are not talking over one another. And the other, the other concern that I did have that which I did want to mention or next thing is that when I do put the council to a vote, that we do it in a little bit more clean fashion, either raising our hands up and we make sure that we enumerate who's raising their hands or something along those lines to where we're not just all in favor, say aye, and we hear aye, and we have no idea whether that's three or four people.
You just call for a stay, county wants it.
And we, and.
And then that's.
The roll, the roll call was, yeah, we did bring that up before, and whatever. Yes. That, you know, that process.
So what do you start, right, left?
Oh, council member. Were there other questions Sadie might have had on that, that she was looking for direction on?
Yes.
I'm not on that one section, but on other sections, on page one oh two, the very top, where it's just talking about how the minutes are written. Just wondering, are you guys okay? We shortened the notes a little bit more, we do have audio and video. And we are, we're not doing a verbatim, but we are still typing up a lot of what is being said. At meetings, who said what versus doing something like what the city, this pod does on theirs. And, but what they do is they give the A D, tell who was introduced five, who presented it, and whether it was moved or not, and if it was carried forward, and what was to be done with it. Unless it's something really controversial or something that we need to have more information, they make it a little bit shorter.
Well, you know, there's a reason why they call them minutes, it's just transcript, transcript is verbatim, you know, minutes. As long, I mean, I, I absolutely don't have any problem with making them as, as efficient as possible, as long as it doesn't change the nature of what was said, which, you know, you can be shorted to, you know, mayor started the meeting, one thing led to another and we adjourned. He'd have a little bit more than that, Mr. Mayor. Yes, council member.
We knew, since I knew men so much, not like this group, but before, we'd have council people say, that's not what I said exactly, that's not why I implied. Well, you who act with them, you'll know what you said. And if they put down verbatim what you said, it's very time to see if they get the words, play it back and pull it through the recordings. She, if you showed it down, just like, there was this question, we summary, they better call us involved. Because when you cut short, when you have, like, A Ds, that's not what I said, well, it's on record, just so you know you said something.
And you use Robert's rules, that's a point well taken. Council member, I do agree with that. Okay, Deputy Mayor Carter, I was just, I, I said, if you do shorten it, I agree with you the same. Important thing is that you are consistent. I know there are people that are, hey, you know, I don't feel like I represented what I said for somebody. They said something and nothing was written there, or it didn't say anything.
Well, and I try and, when I'm looking at it, I'm trying to make sure that the right impression is on here. What you said, although she's not copying what she said, is that you don't agree with that.
We try to, so what we're having to listen to that audio over and over and over and try and do exactly that. Try and make sure that someone talked, they got their turn written in the minute, and how they wanted it versus saying what the outcome of it was. And then people listen to the audio so that the point does get across.
Council member, Paul.
Would it be useful, is it even a possibility, instead of writing things verbatim or even just, you know, I think summaries can sometimes be difficult to, you know, try to capture what people are saying. If there is just a reference to the timestamp, since you're having to go through videos anyway, but referencing, you know, a timestamp in there. Because people could then, if they're curious and look at the minutes, they all get between, you know, two thirty-two to three, whatever is, is the conversation about it. And then they can just, then they can just go straight to the video and look and see what people said. I don't know if that would be more time consuming, but then you wouldn't have to write down everything they can refer to, where to go in the video. Because I think sometimes, you know, our meetings can be long and, and they're not really trying to sit through all that, they're trying to get right to the name or he, but they don't know where it is.
Or they just don't remember, does that?
Okay, I feel like that would be more helpful if I was looking. But again, I don't know how that works, again, I don't know what kind of.
But I, that would be easy, trusted to. But like when that discussion actually started at what time point? But not writing down into Watson said this at this time.
Right.
Yeah, just, I just see the discuss. Six thirty, six forty.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Matt Parker, you have any further concerns with, with code?
Yes, and then. On page one oh seven, I know Deputy Carter had said he's not too sure about it. But instead of having commentators come up and give, state their name and address, just state their name, and whether they live in the city of Bonny Lake or not, that's what most cities are doing nowadays. And he, you know, Deputy Carter had said, you know, a lot of people don't know if they're in Bonny Lake or not. But even if they made the mistake, we're still kind of listening to them and comment anyways.
I, I would agree to that, yeah.
Now, that's, that's. As long as we're allowed to do that, there's no authority that says we have to.
No.
Get, okay.
Well, you're happy for.
My only concern with that, if you have a follow-up, like there are comments, things that became the mayor for John. How do you follow up with them without getting their name and an address?
During the, during the commenting period, that's when you would ask them that. There is a section in here where it does come to comment, so specifically says, if we follow up, you ask them to sign up to the record.
Okay. Or, or how about like we did last week, we had to sign up and date with address on that particular list, but on the record itself, it is, it's implied.
Maybe from right now in the recording, we listen to it, we try to capture the name and the address, and then we have to call, find out. Try and decipher if we're getting the right person, because don't always, can't always understand what they're saying, and catch, try to spell it, figure it out.
Council member Evans, if we're discussing the whole idol as well, I mean, if, if we're not too concerned that they are correct citizens of Bonny Lake, should it be a citizen's comment idol, or should it just be comment, public comment? As, as an option. There's a gentleman that comes here to these meetings and he does not live in the city of Bonny Lake. I don't know that he knows that, but, but he's new to the area, but, yeah, he's outside in the, in the unincorporated area, so.
He's public.
Yeah.
I agree with that.
Or fold to what it says and only allow citizen comment.
I, I have a question on that. I don't, this, this may be slightly unrelated, but when people are coming out to make public comment, I did notice, Mr. Mayor, that a lot of times you, which I think makes it very friendly, so I think it's great. But you, you know, you kind of have a bit of a discourse with them, just acknowledge, you know, thank you and things like that. Is the council able to say anything to them? I never know what to do during that period of time.
In, in your code, you have on there that technically it's not supposed to be a back and forth discussion, but ask council if you guys decide that you want to comment on it. I agree with that a lot.
Yeah, of course. In the, for the intent, as we were saying, making them comfortable, charging them to come talk.
Yeah, because I think it's sometimes awkward if, if you were to say nothing at all and they were done talking.
Right, right.
They would maybe feel more uncomfortable.
Okay, uh, council member.
We need to make a motion if we want to ask a question or respond to a citizen comment? Or can we just do it?
I would, I mean, just personally, I don't know. I, I would be reluctant to want to do that, just because off the cuff, direct comments and short of, you know, the, the cordialness on it. Asking questions that may be a staff level question, or just giving answers that may be a staff level answer. I wouldn't want to put us in a predicament that would be giving out false information potentially, or, or false pretenses of what direction that person should be going down. So I kind of like how it currently is with, with our limited feedback. We're here to listen to them. I wouldn't really want someone saying, well, no, if you did this, this, and this, because I would find, but I would probably be that person. That I may be giving, giving them the information that may not be accurate or, or the right place to start looking at this.
Council member.
I agree with you, I, I think the main thing is just, sometimes there are citizens that come up and, you know, they, they seem nervous. They, you know, they, they come up and I think I just, I sometimes feel like I want to be able to acknowledge them, you know, just to say something like, thank you for coming, thank you for.
Oh, absolutely.
Telling us this, I, I agree with you though, I don't think that's the time to then ask them questions and say certain things.
Whoa, whoa, and, and we do have it on our code that if it does come down to questions such as that, which may be, if they're like, that was controversial, or making people uncomfortable, we are most definitely precluding for you.
So, uh, council member. Since we're on this particular discussion, at P C R C, the Pierce County Regional Council, and the Fugitive County Regional Council, the way theirs is written is that citizens' comments can only be on an agenda item for that evening. So I don't know if that's something that we want to discuss or have as an option, but, but for the purpose of that, it keeps it streamlined from people just going and talking. On, on, on that level of things, there's, there's a gentleman with a shield that goes off for five minutes on absolutely anything, everything that's pertaining to that. So that is their tool to control that, that dialogue.
Yeah, you, you wish not to talk about Florida. Council member Paul.
I have to, I have to disagree with them. I want, I, not, not the shield thing, but just. No, I know, I know. The public, and I think that's what makes the process. I want, I want it to be as, as, you know, least amount of intimidation possible. And so I think if somebody comes and they're listening to other citizens speak during public comment, and then they feel like I would like to say something, they should be able to do that.
Yeah, uh, councilor.
Mr. Mayor, you know, I would, I clearly agree with everything you say. I would probably point out that it's easier to kind of engage with staff. If there is, you know, a person comes forward and says, you know, I can't get it terminated, and you know, X, Y, Z, and it's been those forever, or what have you, you know, and you're, you want to ask a follow-up question to the person, and then say, hey, what, what are you talking about? I've heard about this rule. Instead, you direct this, you know, the mayor, it's like, Mr. Mayor, I would like to know more about this issue, you know, staff, I'm on this bigger issue. That way, you know, you kind of try to avoid directly engaging with the citizen. And that discussion just doesn't work out at that level.
And, and in that way, it could be less intimidating.
Exactly, you know, it's like, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate, you know, X, Y, Z's comments there on that bigger issue. Possibly it's staff gives a report further later on that bigger issue mentioned by Paul Smith.
We did that before, and that, that staff is here just, oh, okay.
Okay, the next one would be on page one thirty-three, and this has to do with chapter with the park commission. And we're wondering if that is a section we should, or not.
Park commission?
Yeah, one is because we have trouble getting a forum at meetings, they've had lots of trouble getting a forum. And then also, Deputy Carter had written on there, is the council is getting vested in a park on its own, or like a steering committee versus a parks commission?
And Deputy Mayor, yeah, could you comment on that?
Yeah, I would just say that it does seem like we are very invested in program. I think we have a lot of ideas on where we want that to go, lots of funding aspects of it as well. But what will the parks look like and all that kind of stuff? And to just hand it off to the park committee who may and may not have those same thoughts, when we're thinking about it anyway, it seems like. Especially if we're having a difficult time getting a forum.
How many, how many people are on the committee and how many people, or how many people are actually visiting the commission?
Seven.
Seven on the commission?
At the price of seven appointed by the mayor, with the consent of the council.
Right, and I remember, I remember doing that, but we're having people who are simply not participating? Or are they at least giving, you're kind of like council member of reliance tonight, are they saying, may I have permission not to be here today because of blah, blah, blah? Or are they just saying, that, you know, I don't want to play? Because then we, we would be looking at replacing with, with mission members who would actually participate.
Not saying anything else, you know, after they missed, missed three meetings there.
Yeah. Okay.
I mean, we'd have to go back and look, I'm not aware, they give a reasonable.
Oh, council member, it's kind of a two-part. Do we have the staff that is there for that? Is it, because I know like with the arts commission, there are times where that meeting is canceled, but not as a result of the commission.
We, the staff does attend, and that's where we find out that they'll up and they'll have a forum, so we have to cancel and they have to wait. Cancel it because they didn't even know that it was not calling each people, not people.
And then, and then the other part to that is if we're reviewing this, could we have a discussion about the external people that are outside of the city limits on some of our commissions? That we have, we have that allowable for, for planning parks and parks commission, I believe.
And design?
And yeah.
Which is the next one, the last one, that question is recommending moving the design commission. They haven't really met in two years. There's a challenge to get all the members to show up to the meeting. On the last meeting, there was only three of the seven.
Well, that's where I believe Deputy. Councilor. Could that be both issues that the parks and we need to roll into, I mean, yeah.
I believe that's the suggestion, is combining parks and planning.
Oh, okay, okay.
Parks, yes, a question on the design commission, now is that still kind of, that was, there's some quasi-legal in that, where the design commission could have control over design and commercial.
Well, themselves, they're purely advisory.
They are advisory and staff, right, the next staff. So if you didn't have those individuals, the staff still has the ability to, you know, tweak with designs and commercial buildings or that.
Consistent with the code, yes, of the science standards.
I was on the design commission for two years, and we did, I did that, whereas it was coming through, what their suggestions and whether we liked it or not. So after that, the design commission, this will be suggested for them to follow. Would I be, I think I have more designs, council member. I was still part of that color, not building over there.
Yes, very good.
So you guys want me to try to combine them?
I, the arts commission has the same problem, I know they have arts funding too, you know, always show. One of my papers is on the arts commission, they've got canceled. You know, we can't keep all consistency, but especially if they have a lot going on. The car, car commission, I really question what we're accomplishing by the parks, uh, at first with the council, every meeting, every month. And what was happening was not getting down to council, what they were, were talking about. Well, I would like to know what they are actually, is accomplished by all this time, with our staff and someone there, you know.
Well, and the communication with us.
Well, yes, it was, you know, it was just never, nothing going back, I'm told, but people are always on that. Yeah, you should tell the council that. But Denver came back to the council.
Uh, council member.
Is there a reason why if the parks commission is not meeting and they're not able to create a forum? Is it, how often are these meetings that are required, or, yeah, they're being asked to attend, always it's once a month? So is there a way to maybe do it, again, I'm just trying to think of, of just. So is there a way to maybe do it, again, I'm just trying to think of just other options. Is it, and I also saw that in the notes that there are some members that don't live in Bonny Lake. You were just mentioning that, and so, I don't know, maybe there's not much investment, thought of investment.
We don't have any parks brand, it kind of makes it hard to have a parks commission. We don't know what we're doing without parks, yeah?
Yeah, Councilmember. If I'm, I may be mistaken, but we get to have an in-person commission meeting, right? For planning, 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 so we're planning? Okay, parks and arts have still been virtual?
I believe the parks has moved.
I think it just started to do it personal.
And I know there, I don't know if it's more recent now, but there was some art commission meetings that were being canceled because of staff limitation, not because of commissioner limitation. Because I was contacted by a couple of commissioners that were, one was the chair that did not cancel meetings, but meetings were canceled, so I don't know if that's the case on other commission.
And arts is not in center too?
Oh, okay.
Okay. Any further concerns on that?
Do we have consensus on what to do? Is that all rolled in?
I would agree, Tom would.
If you guys are in agreement, the rest of it, I know it's mostly just updating it, sort of matches the new health bill and some hard facts. You're okay with that, and I think that being orderantous and policies directed and bring it forward. Thank you.
Yeah, we're set. Good job, Sadie. Thank you. That's how it worked, I have to say.
Sadie's nice.
That reminds me of Congress on... I guess it's Sadie. And on that note, let's adjourn.